Good morning. I'd like to call our meeting to order. It appears that all board members are present. So our first item of business is to amend the agenda with the following changes. We have, and I'll let, when we get to the item mark, we'll give you more information. But we will add a request for an oral argument by teacher license applicant Jerry Daskowski, and a petition for reconsideration by the professional license applicant Harrison Hamud. These will be inserted before board reports as items eight and nine. Current agenda items eight and nine will become items 10 and 11. So those are the changes to our agenda for today. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda with those changes? Moved by Jim McNeese, seconded by Steve Roberts. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we have a 10-0 vote on that.
Madam Chairman, they can't get me on, so I can't.
Oh, so, okay.
I'll have to raise my hand.
All right, well, help me. Yell at me if I don't see you then. So our first agenda item today is to hear from our firm that is going to lead our commissioner search, and we're very pleased to have two representatives, McPherson Jacobson with us today. Present are Dr. Jacobson and Dr. Chris Christman. Dr. Jacobson comes here from Nebraska, Omaha, and he's the CEO of the firm. Dr. Christman is a professor of leadership at Pittsburgh State University, and so they are going to kind of walk us through the process and answer your questions today. So welcome.
Your trust in our firm and assisting you in this process. Normally, we go through introductions at this point, but you have a great website, and we've read about all of you on that website, so we know you. I'd like Dr. Christman to give more of an introduction of himself, and then we'll begin.
Thank you. Number one, it's a pleasure to be here to assist you in probably the most important decision you're going to make, and that's the leader of Department of Education for kids of Kansas. My name is Chris Christman. I've been in education for 25 years in Kansas. In K-12, I was a teacher at Galena, Kansas. I was assistant superintendent and superintendent there for 19 years. And I spent two years in Missouri. I've been at Pittsburgh State University for the last 12 years, first as department chair, was interim dean for a year, and now I'm faculty. So I can have my summers off and visit with my new grandson, which has become pretty important to me. Been associated with McPherson Jacobson for over 20 years. I will tell you that the process that we provide for you is a time-tested, research-based process that makes decision-making based on data. It's very objective, and I think you're going to be very pleased with what we present to you.
My name is Tom Jacobson. I'm the co-founder and owner of McPherson Jacobson. I am also full-time staff at the University of Nebraska at Carney in the Educational Administration Department. And my area of expertise is human resource management, which is what this business is. And I'm able to tell my students I do what I teach, and I teach what I do to do that. Prior to that, I was a superintendent in Minnesota and Colorado for 16 years, went to the university 24 years ago, and also founded this firm 24 years ago. In your packets, there's a bound proposal. I'm just going to walk you through that and give you an overview of what we're going to be doing, and give enough time for questions as to making sure that we are on the same page and that we are meeting your expectations.
May I ask if you want questions as you go along when they arise, or do you want us to wait until you're finished to ask questions? Does it interrupt the flow if we?
No, it won't interrupt the flow, but a lot of times, we get questions of things that are coming up.
Okay.
And so if you just jot them down.
Okay.
If you want to ask a question while we're presenting, that's fine also.
Okay.
To do it.
Well, we'll try to wait until you're done.
All right. The firm was founded in 1991. This is our 24th year. We've done over 500 executive searches across the United States. We have almost 100 consultants. We're one of the leading national firms that work with public sector executives to hire them. Some things I want to point out to you before I get into our process. Number one, we do not hire executives. That's not what our job is. Our job is to provide you a decision-making model, and we're going to take you through that decision-making model, and we're going to advise you along the way with our expertise. But this is your search, and we want to make sure that it meets your expectations as we go through that process. When we chose to become a national firm, we took a look at our competition and said, what will set us apart from the competition? We hung our hat on transparency. We have a very transparent process while keeping you in complete control of the process, but involvement of stakeholders throughout to have input into the process and input to your decision. We are recruiters of talent. We don't have a stable of candidates, but once we surface what it is that's important to you as a board of the desired characteristics, we will then actively begin recruiting individuals that we think most closely meet those characteristics that you've given us. And the last thing is, it says on the folder, it's about the kids. Everybody that works for this firm has been or is involved in public education, and we are firm believers that every child in every district seeks a quality education. Quality education because of quality leadership, and that's why we're in the business to doing that. If you turn to page seven, I'll just quickly go through our five phases. At our first meeting, Dr. Christman and Mr. Lauer will take you through a process called nominal group technique. It's a research-based consensus decision-making process where we will work with you to surface your top four, five, six important characteristics you want your new commissioner to have, and that will help drive our recruiting process to do that. It's a very efficient process of taking a disparate group of people and focusing on what they want in their new commissioner. We'll work with you to set appropriate timelines for the search process and get from you about when you want this person to be on board, so we'll work backwards as we set that calendar and make sure there's ample time for recruiting and advertising. I know that you've gone out and met with stakeholder groups already, and we're going to be able to get that information, and that'll be very helpful. But at that first meeting, we'll talk about are there other groups that you want us to meet with, or the other stakeholder groups you want us to reach out to. We ask them the same three questions that you asked your groups and be able to compare that to you, compare that and bring it into you so that you would have that. We'll work with you on getting advertising out. Our website is one place where we put us on there now. We get between 100,000 and 150,000 hits a month on our website because we're a top national firm. We will also advertise with all state school board, all state administrator associations, and we'll recommend that it be put on the American Association School Administrators' website as well as in Education Weekend. We'll develop a announcement of vacancy brochure to overview the position and what it has to offer to do that. We take care of the application. We're a turnkey operation. We do everything for you except interview candidates. The only time that we would need local staff is to coordinate meeting time and place to do that, so we'll take care of all that information. Once we have developed the profile, what it is you're looking for, our 100 consultants will be actively involved in the recruiting process. We also have a national recruiter, Dr. Steve Joel, who was a superintendent in Kansas, but now superintendent Lincoln, Nebraska, and while connected. Once we have that profile, we'll reach out to individuals that we think are meeting that. Some of our best candidates aren't looking for work right now. They're happy where they are, but we will identify them and try to get them to apply for the position. So our goal is to have the very best people in front of you. We hope that you're going to have a tough decision at the end, that you're going to have some very good people. We take care, again, of all the application materials. We're online with AppleTrack, so everything's digital now, and we have a person full-time in our office that works with the applicants. She also keeps the applicants informed during the process of what they're missing and what they need to get in. On page 10, this is a part I think we do better than our competition, certainly is a part where our consultants work very hard, and that's the vetting of candidates. Once we have our applicants, we take and read each file and go through and begin comparing them against the selection criteria that you determined for us, and we begin to work through and sort those. Some people, after a first reading, will probably be discarded because they're not meeting the criteria or not qualified for the position. I'll give an example. We did Orlando, Florida. One of the candidates was an elementary principal of a 500-student high school, applied to her district, 147,000 students. Very easy to say, probably not ready for this. So we will begin sorting, doing that. We'll be talking amongst ourselves. We'll be talking to the candidates as we go through this process, and then we begin our vetting check. I've been in HR for over 40 years. I've yet to find someone that puts a reference down that doesn't like them. We know that. We start with them. We have our list of questions that we're asking them based on your profile. We have two questions at the end that are extremely important. The second last question is one we learned along the way. Is there anything in this person's background? If it became public information, it would be an embarrassment to this board. We used to say, any skeletons or anything I haven't answered, it's real easy to say no to that, but when you phrase it that way, 99% of the time, there is nothing, but occasionally there's a hesitation, and then we proceed and continue to ask questions. The last question we ask them, is there any, could you give us a name or two or three other people that speak this person's background? They do. We call them, ask them the same list of questions, including, could you give us a name or two or three other people? We go a minimum of three removed from primary references, and what we're looking for is consistency of answers, strengths and weaknesses of the individuals. We will then come back amongst ourselves and begin talking about the candidates. We will present to you the names of everybody that applied. They're your candidates, they're not ours, but we will develop a shortlist, those that we think are most closely meeting what you said you're looking for and what the stakeholders said they're looking for, and we'll present an overall profile of those individuals. You then choose from there who and how many you wish to interview, and whether you want to do semifinalist interviews and then finalists, or if you want to just go to finalist interviews as we do that.
They will look at all applications.
We'll work with you to develop a set of interview questions for your process. We'll coordinate the interview procedures for the candidates. We will set up at your direction any groups that you would like to have meet the candidates. And here's how we do that, and here's how we control that, so you're in control. If you have desired groups that you would like to have an opportunity to meet the candidate, we work with them and tell them how the process goes. And we're telling them two things. You're doing two things. You're selling yourself in this state to the candidate, because this is a two-way decision-making process, and we're promoting you as much as we're recruiting candidates. And then they're forming an opinion, and what they do is they have a sheet of paper, and this group is going to put on John Doe, Jane Doe. Here's what we liked about them. Here's any questions we have on them. After they're done, they immediately put that in an envelope and seal it, present it to, give it to the point of contact. After you've interviewed everybody and had your primary discussion, you then open and read those. And I sat with the board two years ago where they interviewed four individuals. They were deadlocked on two, and after an hour and a half discussion, I said, let's open the input forms. All the groups had one candidate above the other. Sometimes one just comes right to the surface, but meaningful input to you, and people know they've been heard as you contemplate this. Typically, a two-person decision, so we encourage you to have the spouse invited in for the interview day, and we help set up information for them to see. Housing, your shopping, the things that are important to move a family to do that. What we want to have happen is a candidate and a spouse, as they're getting in the car and getting ready to go home, saying, this is a great spot, and we met some great people. I hope they offer us a job. And so it's important for us, again, the two-way decision-making process. Those that are not selected for interviews, they get a personalized letter that we send out on your behalf thanking them for the process. We make the final arrangements for the candidate's visit to the interview, and we personally call those that were not selected and thank them on your behalf for being part of the process. As I said, we're a turnkey operation. We do everything but interview. We provide a transition phase where we come back the first year and take you and your new commissioner through a process where you're going to identify two or three performance objectives for that first year. We have found that this is clarifying expectations. This is helping that transition into the first year, and with that, we offer a one-year guarantee. If anything happens and the person can't continue, if they become ill, we'll redo the search just for the expenses. We are with you until you successfully hire the commissioner. If we get down to the end and you say, we've met some nice people, but we haven't found our commissioner, we don't want you to hire a body, just have somebody here. We'll come back and reopen the position and keep doing it. Don't think that's going to happen, but I want you to be aware of that. I don't lecture that much in my classes. Let me stop, respond to questions. I don't lecture in classes anymore. We teach all online, so.
So are there questions at this point? I had something, and then maybe others will mention what has come to mind. You talked about stakeholder input and the fact that we had gone out seeking input, but I think to have a broader base of opinion, that there might be other specific groups that we want to hear from. One is the staff here at KSBE, and I am assuming you will have some type of a forum for staff members here to provide input.
If that's what you want, yes. Typically, what we do on a school district when we're doing superintendent search, we meet with employees by groups. So we meet with the teachers as a group. We meet with the certified staff as a group, the principal as a group, so whatever groups of employees you have, we can do that.
Okay, well, I think that's important. And I would ask board members, if there are any specific groups that were not represented in your focus groups that you hosted, that you would like to see them seek input from? I'm not hearing any.
The uniqueness of this search might, I want you to consider possibly some of the professional organizations if you would want to have input from them, teachers, administrators, board members, whatever there are, those organizations out there.
Yeah, personally, I had thought that might be important. So do we need to name them, Janet?
I would agree. I think that it would be very, very important to go ahead and have the associations specifically, you know, NEA, USA.
KASB.
KASB, PTA.
And we can further identify those groups at the first meeting.
Okay, that's good. I didn't know how soon you needed to get started with that initiative.
We also have the capability, if you want us to, is to post online through SurveyMonkey on your website and our website, your three questions, and people can fill that in and send it in to us. We ask them to self-identify what group they associate with, whether they're a parent, whether they're a student, whether they're a businessperson, whatever, and then we just gather all that information too, so at the appropriate time, we can do that also.
How long do you usually leave that process open?
We typically have just run it for seven days.
Yeah, that makes sense.
People are aware of it, and if they're procrastinators, they're not going to get on in 14 days.
Because of the sheer number of members, you might want to consider possibly sending it to the executive director, maybe the executive board of each organization as their elected representatives, and that would be a little more workable.
Carolyn Campbell has a question.
Thank you. No, just a suggestion of who I would like to see reached out to in this building. There's the Kansas African-American Affairs Commission, the Hispanic, and the Native. They're right over here, and then the NAACP.
Okay.
And they're in this building?
Well, not the NAACP, but the Native American and Hispanic and African American, they're right over in this corner here, but yes, they're in this building.
Good idea.
Thank you, Carolyn. Sally Cobble.
I think maybe we weren't as strong on some of our focus groups on business and industry that I would like to see. We do have a career and tech board within, what's that called? Janet, you're on it. Career and Tech Board, huh?
Kansas Advisory.
We have an advisory board.
For career tech education, and they're meeting the 18th of this month.
But we have that group, and we also have a group within called SEAC, and it's Special Ed. And those two boards do a lot of advising to us, and I think it might be a good idea to.
Dr. Christman's writing them all down here, so.
It's probably not what you wanted, but we were thinking.
And we will send a list to Peggy probably, and she can distribute that out if there are others you don't want to add to.
Again, we can add to this at the first board, at first meeting, the organization meeting.
And that's something, I don't know if you want to wait till you're finished with your presentation for us to talk about when we can schedule that. We'll do that, let you finish, because I would like to see that happen as soon as possible.
We need about two and a half hours with you to set the search up, create the calendar, do your criteria, and get everything in place, and so whenever the time is right to discuss a date for that, we can do that.
Okay. Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I was going to make some of the same suggestions that others have already made. However, I also had another question. As I was listening to who you would send, like, kind of put ads in specifically, papers, journals, whatever. I didn't hear of any, and maybe there isn't one, of national, a national organization, yes? Yes.
The American Association of School Administrators is the national, a national organization in education.
NASTI is not who I'm thinking of. I'm thinking of school officers.
Chief School Officer.
CS.
That it seems to me that there's, that if we're doing a national search, it shouldn't just be superintendents. It should be also in our depart, through departments of ed across the nation as well.
Right. Again, at the first meeting, we specifically identify where the ads are going to go, because some of the ads have a cost to them, and so we will have a copy of an ad and the potential cost, but the one that you just mentioned will be one.
Okay, thank you. Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If it would please the board, I would like to suggest that we reach out to the House and Senate Education Committees across the street. Whether or not they'll have significant input, I have no idea, but it would be a good idea to reach out to them, I think.
Are there other questions?
Yes, one more.
Jim McNeese.
Will you be sending out information to the press and the media about the search, and not just to the larger newspapers in metropolitan areas, but to newspapers across the state?
What we do is we prepare press releases for you. We don't issue. We have whoever you work with to issue them, because some people like to write them a little differently than we prepare them, but we'll have the essential information into a press release, beginning it to Peggy, and then you can decide how you want to disperse that.
Sure. I just want to make sure that, and we can take care of that, who it goes to. Thank you.
Other questions at this point? Okay, then. You had some other things to talk about today or not? Timeline, all that?
What we need is to set a date for the first meeting.
Okay.
And then at that, we're going to cover everything that was in the beginning.
We might talk about that first meeting just a little bit. That first meeting is very important with the board. We're going to identify the criteria that you're looking for in the next commissioner. That will basically run the search. The application will be tailor-made to identify those criteria. Each candidate will speak to their experience and their strengths to those criteria that you're looking at. We'll need to talk about such things as qualifications. Do you expect a terminal degree, someone to have a doctorate, experience, and so on? So those are things that you can kind of be thinking about. We'll also need to be thinking about some compensation parameters at that time, too. Many of the candidates will want to have an idea of what the compensation is going to be. We're not asking for specifics, but maybe a range that you might think about as well. At that time, we can finalize the groups that you want to be involved for input. We'll use SurveyMonkey for that. We'll probably visit with the KSBE staff and those around here locally. We'd like to visit face-to-face with those, but some of the others, because they're located across the state, some of the boards might be a little more difficult. So that's a pretty important meeting, because that's going to identify what you're looking for in the next commissioner. So you need to spend some time prior to that meeting in thinking about four, five, six characteristics you think come to the top that should be considered in that person.
So do you have, is your schedule fairly flexible, or do you have some dates that are not possible?
My schedule is flexible. The third week of July, I have a waiting in Wyoming. Next week, we have a meeting in Florida. Other than that, I'm open.
I hope we could get this accomplished before our next board meeting, so if you board members could look at calendars. Let's see if, this is such a messy process to try to come up with a date.
Possibly the last week of June, that's what you're looking at?
Janet. Looking at the calendar, the last week of June, July 23rd through the 27th, that's what I'm looking at.
June 23rd.
June, yes, thank you. Okay, so is that kind of timeframe?
Yeah, and my calendar is very flexible that particular week.
Mine is, except for Friday.
Okay, Jim, are there days you can't do it?
I can, 24th, 25th, 26th, 27th.
Are good or bad? I didn't, okay.
Change schedules.
Deana?
The 24th is not a good day.
It is what?
It is not.
Okay. 25th or 26th, Carolyn?
Any day but the 27th.
Okay.
Some of us are having to campaign. I would prefer the 24th or the 26th, the 23rd. I can change the 25th, but I don't want to.
Janet?
I'm probably going to have to do it by telephone conference, because I'm leaving town the 24th, and I will not be back until July the 2nd. I could come the 23rd. That's the only day I could physically be here, but otherwise, I'm willing to do it by a conference call.
And Jim, you couldn't do it on the 23rd? Okay.
I'd be willing to do it on a conference call, but I am going to be at my son's house in Texas. I'll be in Dallas.
Okay. John, when are you, would you be available the 25th or 26th?
I can do the 25th, okay. I can do the 23rd or the 25th.
25th. Okay, Ken, how about you?
I'm good for any day except Tuesday, the 24th.
Okay. And Steve?
I'm largely an unknown. I may have to phone in. My wife and I are going to the Mayo Clinic that week, and we don't know how long we're going to be in Minnesota.
Well, it looks to me like the, now Sally, you said you would prefer not to do it on the 25th. If we could schedule it, like, either in the morning or the afternoon, would that?
The afternoon would be better.
Okay.
I'll have to drive there from Oakland.
Well, it sounded.
The afternoon.
When is your next regular meeting?
It's July, what are the dates?
8th and 9th.
8th and 9th, so. What, 8th and 9th, so.
On the week before is 4th. The 20th.
Just on the 25th.
Let's, let's try to schedule it then for the 25th. Peggy, can you see about availability for a place for us to meet that day? What if we start at 1:30 or 2:00, which if it's going to take a couple...
It'll take two, two and a half hours.
Okay. Is 1:30, would that give you time to get here or, Sally? Okay, does 1:30 on the 25th then seem acceptable to everyone? And those who can't, who have definite other plans, Peggy can arrange to be with us through the conference call? Okay, we have a date.
Thank you very much. If there are any other questions for us?
Other questions? Boy, what a quiet group today.
Just wait till the 25th.
Thank you very much for bringing your trust in us and we look forward into working with you and getting the best possible people in front of you for your decision.
We do, too. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm so glad you're here. I didn't see you behind the post, so. I've got to get my papers together here. We're so happy to have Colleen Riley and Gail Stuber here with us today to talk about early childhood programs. Give us an update. This is something we identified as a priority and so we'll be happy to hear what you have to share with us.
Wonderful. Well, good morning and thank you for the opportunity to be here. I am so pleased to be able to introduce to you Vera Stro, Retner. Oh, I knew I goofed that up. Just call her Vera. Vera. Janet Newton and Gail Stuber. They are the dynamic trio of the KSDE Early Childhood Team. They work across our agency, they work across other state agencies, they work with districts, schools, the early childhood programs in the communities in order to ensure that families and children are getting the supports that they need. So it really is an honor for me to be able to introduce to you Gail and have her, just turn things over to Gail. Thanks.
Thank you very much. This is exciting. I decided this would be fun. So I hope you think so, too. You have updates and Nick is working to get the presentation up and running and probably help me do the little clicker thing. What I did was take your wonderful Goal Four and the five objectives with it. And as you'll see as I walk through this, you have a copy of the presentation in your packet and some other documents that, thanks to Cheryl Franklin, are wonderfully bright and should keep us going through the day. Oh, good. And I just clicked this one, right? Either one, okay, whichever one I'm used to. So this is really a pleasure and a treat actually for me to come and share with you all the work that we've been doing. And I'm also going to share with you the work you've been doing around the goal. Just over a year ago, I was here and presenting just kind of some background on early childhood for you and the work that you, that you wanted us to go forward with. And we left that meeting and, oh gosh, it's one of these things we have to click. We left that meeting and I met Janet and Vera was not on board at the time, but we met with Brad and Colleen and they issued a challenge. They said, "You have a goal. You have some objectives. What do you think it should look like?" So, you know, we're early childhood. We thought, okay, this is great. We've got the recommendations. This is what we gave you last year. And we decided to move forward and build an action plan based on the five, the four recommendations and your five objectives. But what I'd like for you to do, first of all, is look at this wonderful document because what this is, is a listing of the work that you have done to support your goal over the last year. Thanks to Peggy pulling all this together for us and to Cheryl for putting it together. On the left side are the objectives and we have listed it by age groups because that tends to be what programs are around. We have the parents as teachers is birth to five in Kansas. We have three to five preschool, which includes our Section 619, the Early Childhood Special Ed Preschool, the Kansas Preschool Program, the State Pre-K Kindergarten, and then of course we have K-3, which is also part of the Early Childhood Continuum. So as you look down, just to highlight a few, the very first one, you know, we're revising the Early Childhood Unified License, birth through third grade, regular ed and special ed. That's in the works. So you've been supporting that work last year in April and in June, you supported and approved the Parents as Teachers Grants, the Kansas Preschool Program, like you did today, and the State Pre-K. So you've done a lot of work over the years, the year, to support the, the goal that you set. And as you can see, a lot of it's more on the K-3 side, but you do quite a bit across the whole continuum. And you have several that support the preschool through, through kindergarten and, and third grade. So building on these, we decided to design a vision and you have that in the packet. And we took your goal and said, "The vision is that all children succeed," which I know is your vision across all of your board's strategic directions. And we took your five objectives and we developed them into what I guess I would call action statements. So define early childhood, it's at the bottom of this page. It's a continuum of research-based, effective and sustainable early learning programs, which we would like to have available for all children, birth through grade three. So it's, it's your, your words, your objective, and then we kind of made it more of an action statement. Underneath that, on the next page, we took the School Readiness Framework, which is birth to five. It has the four components. What's a ready community? What is a ready family? What are the ready educational environments? What does that look like? And what does a ready child who's ready for success in kindergarten look like? So we took those four components and then we looked at what we're doing with our KSDE programs across the whole continuum of birth through grade 12. The school, and because we wanted to show that early childhood and the work that we do provides a foundation for K-12, but it also is very much aligned with the work that K-12 does. We kind of wanted to say, "We do what you do," but we may do it slightly differently, but then high school does it differently from elementary. So we're part of the continuum. We have early learning standards, birth to five through five, and they are aligned with Kansas College Career Ready standards. As a matter of fact, the kindergarten level standards are included in our early learning document so that kindergarten teachers can look at that and say, "Where, you know, where are the kids coming from? What do they know and what did the preschool teachers work on in order to send them to our school?" We have the School Readiness Framework. Now that does stop at the kindergarten door, but it is aligned with and supported by the multi-tiered system of supports, which really is the only initiative and, and framework that goes birth through grade 12. We have, we have an implementation program that we are implementing, MTSS, and, and I'm going to talk that through with you in a little bit. We have family engagement and partnership standards that we are just starting to work on. They will be aligned with and connected to the Parents, Parent, Teacher Association Standards, the PTA. And then the State Longitudinal Data System, which is, you know, Kansas has had for a number of years. There's an early childhood piece to that through KSDE programs, but we need to be working with our partners because if you look at the framework, we've got early childhood in community centers, we have family home care. What are they doing and what can we do to partner with them and make sure that kids enter school ready to be successful? So that's the background of it and I wanted to go just a little bit on each one of these. School Readiness Framework, that's that unified vision. It was developed by a task, a task force across, it's been two years now. Sometimes no time flies when you are having fun, even when you're not. So the framework is something that we use to make decisions around policies and practices in our programs and it gives this common element for making a data decision, data-driven decision-making. MTSS, just like it is with the K-12 world, it provides data, it's based on research. And what we find in early childhood, and I, I'm excited to share with you the Kansas Preschool Program because we're implementing it there, is that it really is allowing us to provide a structure for quality in the, in the early learning years. That, you know, we all try very hard in early childhood, but we're all over the map. We have lots of different bosses. We have childcare that's funded by parents and we have Head Start that's national and federal funding and state funding. And we have our programs and we have childcare licensing. So the framework provides kind of a consistency across the birth to five, but MTSS is helping us build equality in and bringing in the families in the community. So they are actually very excited about implementing this, which is, I can actually say with truth. You're not always able to do that when you bring in something new. As I said, we have our early learning standards, birth to five, what kids aged birth to five should no one be able to do. We are in the process and you approved yesterday, working with KU to devise some training around this through the Early Childhood Leadership Team. How do you implement it? How do you, how do you use these standards with children who are English language learners, who are children who have disabilities? How do you use it within the, the parameters of a home visitation program? Because that's working with the parents to help them work with the children. So we're, we're getting that in place so that these standards will be usable across all settings. Now, the family engagement and partnership is something that we've done very well in the Parents as Teachers Program. We do it with the Early Childhood Special Ed Program that Vera coordinates. But, you know, you can always do better. We want to make this intentional. We want to make it meaningful and provide professional development. So one of the real exciting things that happened was that Kansas applied for a W, I have to say this right because you can't say Kellogg Grant, WK Kellogg Foundation Grant. There were 1,200 applicants and 30 got it and we were one of them. And this is done through with the Early Childhood Leadership Team, which has membership from Department for Children Families, Department for Health and Environment, KSDE, the Children's Cabinet, and with KFAST, which is, you know, an incorporated entity that Jane Groff coordinates. They work more with K-12, but they're working with us and will help that alignment, I think, happen. And this is going to allow us to develop those statewide standards for family engagement and partnership. All programs will be able to use it and we'll be working at the local level as well as the state level. So I think it's going to be really exciting and we're just getting started. It was just received, I think, this spring, so. And then the Early Childhood Integrated Data System, you know, this is, again, beginning in the process. We do look at what children know and can do when they're in the State Pre-K Program. We look at what's happening in the classroom so we can determine how effective we are and give teachers feedback. These things seem to work with children who have risk factors, that kind of thing. But we really want to promote continuous quality and that's going to help us. And it's also going to link to the K-12 State Longitudinal Data System. So when kids come into kindergarten, they can say, "You know what? They've had these experiences." And kids who have been through, we knew this a little bit from the all-day kindergarten study that we did, that kids who are in a more formalized pre-kindergarten program, like a, like a State Pre-K or a Head Start or even a childcare center did better than children who only were in family home care because they had more of a structure. They seemed to have more teachers that knew what they were doing and had some training in child development in early childhood. So all of this stuff will help us do a better job. Okay, the Kansas Preschool Program. This is the program that is funded in part by the Children's Cabinet. It is composed of Head Start programs, childcare community programs and State Pre-K. It is located in 12 sites across the state, and I wrote them down because I always forget at least one. And it's, it's, it's in its eighth year. It was first funded and, and administered by the Children's Cabinet. We got it six years ago. And we spent a lot of time, I brought together stakeholders, I brought together a practitioner group. We had a lot of lessons learned. And last year, we really developed a model that's based on research, that's based on what we've learned to date and includes these four components: community collaboration, high-quality early learning experiences, which you would assume, family engagement and partnership, and then successful children, you know, what do they look like when they get out? It's aligned with the School Readiness Framework. It's aligned with your vision and Goal Four. And I actually have a write-up on that that I'd be happy to share that I gave to Libby Doggett, who is the, I wrote it down, too, Deputy Assistant Secretary for the U.S. Department of Ed. She's the leader of Office of Early Learning. And I just said, you know, "You asked for models. I wanted to share this with you." And she sent me an email yesterday and said she was very impressed. It looked like high quality and Kansas was doing good work. We're in our first year moving into our second on that. It's a three-year kind of grant, I guess you would say, that I'm allowing the same 12 to make sure they have the money so that we can work with them and meet the outcomes that we have, which is to improve collaboration through strengthening community partnerships. They are required to have a community collaborative, I guess you'd call it. Representatives of all the early childhood member programs have to come together, have to talk together. And we all know collaboration, you know, it's like art, you know, you know it when you see it, but we had to define it. And I will say that this year, starting with the support, the KSDE supporting through TAZN, training for them on MTSS, and one of the pieces is a Kansas Preschool Program Leadership Team. And, you know, it was something new and they had to come to meetings, but they are loving it because in early childhood, we just don't have the structure. And one of, actually, one of the sites is the Opportunity Place, the Opportunity Project, Barry Downing's Early Childhood Programs down in Wichita. And the director, the new director of that, one of the programs is actually using MTSS to drive their strategic planning because she knows the structure. So it's really making collaboration work more because they have something to, to collaborate around and understand. We're increasing family engagement in their child's education because we are asking and, I can say requiring, we're requiring them to have a home visitation program that's evidence-based. They've all chosen Parents as Teachers because Parents as Teachers is evidence-based, it's, you know, and researched. It's already in the state and there's a third through kindergarten curriculum now. So my hope is that at some point, it will also be helpful to do that transition into kindergarten. Sometimes, you know, kids fall through the slot, you know, the cracks on that one. But they are just starting that this year, but they are embedding that in the work. They are a part of the leadership team and then they have their program leadership teams as well. So the high-quality learning experience is driven by MTSS. They're getting training on specific assessments. It'll give them data on literacy. We're moving into numeracy and behavior. But they also are being required to have a licensed teacher, a licensed teacher in early childhood or early childhood unified. And there was a little bit of a pushback on that, but you know, there's so much research out there that says the teacher's the heart of quality in, in a classroom and in a school-based setting and in a, in a center as well. So the schools, and that's where the collaboration starts. The schools are working with the Head Starts in Kansas City, Kansas. They have school teachers. They're the lead teachers and Head Start teachers that don't have the license are the assistant teachers. So they have two very strong professionals in the, in the classroom and they're learning from each other. So, and they're all doing it differently.
You mentioned 12 sites. I, I thought you might tell us where they are so we will know if there are any in our district.
There probably are because they're all over the state. We have Kansas City, Kansas, that is working with Head Start. We have Shawnee Mission that has Head Start and some community childcare. Topeka, and they have a fabulous one. I don't know if you've been to the Pine Ridge, but they have childcare centers, small childcare centers. They have Head Start. They have the State Pre-K and I believe they are doing more inclusion. There aren't, there is not as much inclusion in this model yet as we would like. Douglas County, so Baldwin and Lawrence and Head Start and childcare centers in that collaborative. Manhattan, Ogden, which is working with K-State. They have multiple partners. Most of the children are in a classroom that's more school-based, but they are working with their partners to make it more of a community feel, I guess you would say. Geary County, so we have Junction City. Reno County, which includes not just Hutchinson, but also Sterling and, and some of the other smaller districts around. Crawford County, so it used to be Monica... Crawford County, so it used to be Monica Vernon, now it's Ann Elliott, and they have the Family Resource Center down there, and they work with the school districts and multiple school districts, actually, some of the smaller ones around there as well. Sedgwick County, which is, I believe it's, I'm trying to think, I think it's Derby, Mays, Wichita, 259. Plus, they had some issues with Head Start. One of the issues when you require licensed teachers is that if you have a program like Head Start, which doesn't require licensed teachers, then they're, they feel like they have to pay that teacher more, and that would have some issues with the other teachers, and so they actually dropped out of the program, but they got others in. And they have, you know, community childcare, but that's something that we need to work through. So, we have Head Start collab office actually involved with us on that one. The Opportunity Place is another one. South Central Kansas, I would have to say is my favorite one, is across three counties, includes Greensburg, it has Medicine Lodge, it has, it's not Sylvia, but it's Hudson, is it Hudson? You know, there's several west of Hutchinson, and then they have Kingman and several. I think they have six different districts. They have faith-based preschool, and they have, I think it's a Catholic St. John's or something like that. So, that's one. That's one's kind of all over the place, but they're doing quite a nice job. And then we have Dodge City, bright beginnings.
So, Montgomery County doesn't have one?
No.
Okay.
That's not to say we couldn't do that if we had more money.
Well, they have a wonderful collaborative group down there, and I just...
I think that's the MEATV, McV, it's the Home Visiting, yes, program. Yeah, I think that we've tried to expand it, but the funding, the funding that we get from the cabinet helps us do these different things. They already get Head Start funding to pay for the kids, and they, you know, teachers, I mean, parents are paying tuition, and so, you know, they all use their funding mostly for child, for teacher salaries, actually. Some transportation, some materials, and now we have travel, and, but the training we are trying to provide for them as low as cost as possible. The only corner of the state we don't have is Northwest. So, you know, that, we keep trying on that one. So, this is kind of what it looks like. We're implementing MTSS in community and school-based programs. So, they're working as a collaborative at the community level, and then they go back to their program level. Now, it's hard, we have a couple preschools that, you know, the teacher is like me, myself, and I, you know, she's the administrator, she's the teacher, she's the, you know, janitor and all that stuff. And so, we're working with them. Misty Gosin is kind of directing that because she's on the MTSS core team, and she's helping them see how they can kind of work together to create that program leadership. They're doing some action planning to look at how their program needs line up with what we can help provide, and they're sharing resources. You know, collaboration's the answer when resources are tight. I mean, it's just the way to do it. And we're looking at how effective their programs are. They got professional development on an instrument called MYIGDYS, which is all on early literacy, so that they can start learning this fall how to implement that three times a year. It's very quick. And then they can analyze that data, they'll get training on that, and how's that going to impact my instruction? So, we're working on that. We're aligning what we do with Kansas Early Learning Standards, and then, as I said, we're including Parents as Teachers to connect that home and classroom of learning. One of the pieces that we added was to make sure that the parent educator also talks not just with the parent but also with the child's teacher, so that there's kind of a three-way discussion of the child's needs, so we're all kind of on the same page. So, to the action plan. You have it, I'm not expecting you to memorize it all today, but I just kind of wanted to walk you through what it looks like. We have, across the top, at the very top, we have a page per objective, pretty much. And then we have the current status, where the state is that we could see as far as that particular objective goes. So, as you can see, in one, we've got the Parents as Teachers, it's in 168 districts, state pre-K, which is the old, the new name for the old four-year-old at-risk, it's 181 districts, we have early childhood special ed in all, and then the Kansas Preschool Program is in 30 school districts and 20 community sites. So, it really is spread out and really intersects with a lot of the work that we're doing with school districts as well. So, each one has the current status, and then what we have is four columns. The first one's building on what you're doing already, what are your actions? And just continue to, for example, support implementation of practices and programming that are based on the school readiness framework. Continue to support our programs, which we very much appreciate. The second column, the purple one, is proposed actions, not just for the board but also for KSTE leadership. It's always kind of fun to give suggestions to the boss. And then we have activities that the KSTE Early Childhood Services Unit, which is Vera and Janet and myself, but also includes some TAZEN members, that Dave Lindeman, Misty Gosin, Phoebe Rinkle, and Shelley Nelson work through kits and TAZEN, and so they are helping, will help us with some of the developing and disseminating kinds of things, developing guidance, for example. And then the last one is the resources and actions, and it's not all money. I just toss that out since that seems to be something that we always have an issue with. So, we pulled out about six that we thought might be priority for you. Obviously, we would love for you to continue goal four, to emphasize early childhood as a foundation for school success and make it a real integral part of the agency's mission and vision. On objective one, we pulled out just supporting and expanding our program, and sustaining is maybe what we can do now, and that's great. You know, that's under D, we, you know, support expansion, and then we would, we could do something in the Early Childhood Unit of writing written guidance that would support implementation of these programs. We have our grants, we have a lot of supports left in current, but we could always add. The three of us are part of this Early Childhood State Leadership Team, and that helps, we know, we work with the state Head Start Collaboration Office. We work with childcare, we work with Part C, obviously, you know, the Empathantolos of Special Needs, and we work with childcare licensing, you know, so we all kind of know what we're doing. Engaging with the Kansas Board of Regents in a conversation around expanding and increasing the number of graduates, that's under objective two. You know, we have some current status information, but this is something that, you know, would help the field since we are hoping to require more and more licensed teachers in early childhood, so they are highly qualifying. Also under two, continuing to endorse implementation of MTSS in early childhood programs. We're working very hard with that. I think it's getting very successful, but, you know, your support is wonderful for us. We really get things going on that. Adopt policies for all of our programs and ensure that meaningful family engagement and partnership occurs. That's objective three. It matches your objective, which was to ensure that they have access to best practices, research. And how to identify and access early childhood education for their children. Having a home visitation program, Parents as Teachers refer families all the time to needed services. They're there. They create that relationship that allows them to talk through some things. And then, continue to promote and advocate for universal evidence-based early childhood programs. We did a fabulous job with early, with full day K, I mean, we were there, we had the information. So, that helps us know the direction to go and gives us, you know, specific things to work on. So, there's obviously a lot more in here, and if you have questions, this is a light, I did not put tons of grandkid pictures in there, I hate to tell you this, but the boys are eight and a half. They're not in the Early Childhood continuum anymore. The girls are, and they know that, of course. And then the girls are going to be seven. So, you know, they're edging up there, you know. Seven is like the new 16, I guess, but they are fun. And here's our information. So, thank you again. This has really been a treat, not just to share, but to, we spent a year doing this, and it has just been fabulous to help us get our minds around it as well as, you know, build on things that you have and ask us to do, so.
We do have a few questions.
Sure.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is very exciting.
Well, I think so, too.
In my opinion, by far the best thing we've gotten on the last day and a half, so, I don't know how everybody else feels, but, and I'm a secondary, retired secondary educator, but I just think early childhood is so important. I really like seeing the partnerships and the collaborations that you guys have established. Sounds like you're making...
Continue with that.
Yeah, sounds like you're making really good progress there, and, you know, that's just what we have to do as far as partnerships across the state.
Well, it makes it better for everyone, anyway.
Absolutely. And the early childhood, encouraging the early childhood graduates, I think that is a great goal, and I think having a conversation with the Board of Regents is probably a good thing. Maybe Sally, that's something we can bring up at our coordinating council meeting in the future with KBOR, because I think that's, you know, having those licensed folks is , I think, is important.
Makes a difference.
I just know that we need more folks available to go into those programs. So, you know, I just thank you for your work, and, boy, I'd say, keep it up.
Oh, well, thank you. I will. Not retiring quite yet, so.
Dina Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about the data collection.
Early childhood.
When you talk about data collection, how much of that data, I know Parents as Teachers asks for some data, that I have a superintendent at home that has voiced some concerns about some of that information being a part of our kid's program or kid's data, that it would keep going on for perpetuity, so to speak.
Well, it is, you know, parents always have the option to pull out, and I, you know, I don't know if Janet wants to add anything to that, but it's totally voluntary on the part of the parents, of course. And that information, there are, we have several surveys, you know, two for families, and one of them asks, you know, pretty straightforward things like, does someone read to your child in the home on a daily basis and/or how often? You know, that kind of news that we know support kindergarten readiness. Some of the others are more around risk factors so that we know in general the kinds of children, kinds of things and supports children and families need. So, that's really the basis for that. But they do have the option, and they all sign parent consent, so they can certainly do that and pull that. And they don't have to answer all the items either, and I think sometimes they don't, the teachers don't know that.
Well, my concern isn't that you have that information as an early, in early childhood, but how long it exists in the data system.
Well, now, that's, and I think that's something that...
And I'm just asking a question for...
Consideration.
To try to answer his question.
Well, and I'm going to give it a shot, and then somebody can jump in on this one, probably Janet, since she's ready. But the Early Childhood Integrated Data System will be governed through a data governance system, and those are the kinds of things that that governance board, which will be the people who actually own the data, make that decision. And Janet, did you want to add more to that?
Yes. The, any of the data that we collect is through the authenticated application through KSTE, which the superintendents determine who has access to that data within their own school district. KSTE, of course, is bound by the privacy laws, and I think you heard some more about that and what's been changing with the state. And that applies to early childhood programs as well. The data that we collect on families, again, is what we ask of anyone in Parents as Teachers from the beginning of time. It's just that we never put it into an electronic format, collected at the state level, but the local districts have had their own data systems of which they've put that data into. So, again, it's really not new data, it's just the first time that we've collected the data at a state level so that we can better answer your questions about the effectiveness of Parents as Teachers, because, again, it's a two-generational program. It really is about providing education to the parent to help them be their child's best teacher and around what their child is doing. So, it's really about the child in context of the family. So, in order to really look at how a two-generational program improves and impacts long-term the readiness of children in school, we need to look at and be able to disaggregate data around where the families are at and how well Parents as Teachers is impacting families of English-language learners, the same or differently from other groups. But as far as providing family data out to individually, KSTE would not do that without following all of the same privacy protections that applies to any other data system.
But does it, once they become a kindergartner and a first grader and on through the school system, does that follow the child all through their school, schooling year, the rest of their years?
Right. I think the answer to that question really is that the data is housed within the web application called Foundations for School Success. So, nobody can look at individual family or child data without permission from the superintendent. So, I can't say that no superintendent would ever allow the kindergarten teacher access to that data because that would be a local decision, but it is probably not likely that very, that that could, that would happen. So, again, it's who has access to see the data at that local school district, which the superintendent controls.
Okay. Well, I can visit with you about that later. And another question, if I may, Madam Chair. Salina isn't one of the communities you mentioned, so I wondered, do you do training for other...
Other sites?
Other sites as well, or is it just the sites?
Well, it, you know...
The 12 areas that you were mentioning?
Well, yeah, and the 12 areas were selected before they came to us and through the cabinet, and there's just never been more money to add. And at one point in time, I thought about opening it up so that it was kind of a, not free-for-all, but that, you know, anybody could apply, but that was kind of nixed by the cabinet, and at that point in time, because we were working on the model, we just kept with what we have. I would love to expand, and Salina would be perfect because they're doing so many different things.
There's a lot of collaboration there.
There is, and across all programs.
Okay. Thank you. Sally Cobble.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm kind of piggyback off of what Dina said. I've got some school, some preschools that are not part of your 12.
Yes.
Okay. So, who do they answer to, just their local boards?
Preschools typically have a board unless it's a family care center, in which case, I suppose they answer to the parents, but it's a business, you know, by, it's run by usually one person, maybe with some assistants. So, and Head Start, they answer to the federal, they have federal performance standards, like 1,700 of them, so.
Okay. So, if a local district has a preschool that they got the money at risk...
Right.
At-risk preschool.
Then they answer to their local school board. They have certain requirements that they have to meet that are part of the grant. They have to have an aligned curriculum with the state standards, they have to have a licensed teacher, although they are allowed to have a license in early, in elementary ed. We prefer not, but there just aren't enough of early childhood. I mean, so there's a list. And then, of course, the children who are funded through that program are funded if they meet one of the eight risk criteria. However, you know, school districts these days are creating their own preschools, you know, a lot of them out in the western part, there's just nothing there. We have counties with no centers, only family childcare, and they don't have preschools. And so, a lot of school districts are starting their own preschools, and they're working with us and with the child, licensed childcare licensing department to help to create a preschool for sometimes three- to five-year-olds. So, they all look different, this is Kansas.
Well, I got two things to say to that. One thing, I think what you're doing is just awesome.
Oh, thank you.
And so, as I see these problems, I, they're not, I'm not being critical.
Oh, no.
I'm just seeing what's happening. One of the things that came up on my focus groups is that the kindergarten teachers now have a larger gap in the children that they are getting than ever before. Part of that is the success of preschool, which, you know, is kind of funny, but it's something that we...
It's sad.
Yeah, well, I know it's sad, but it... Yeah. Well, I know it's sad, but yet, it's a good problem. And so we might have to be starting to rethink kindergarten a little bit on, you know, we have a problem of not, not having all day everywhere. But we also have this problem of the large gaps. And there may, you know, we may have to do some type of structure for a kindergarten for, the preschoolers have gone to and one that they haven't. And then you get the language barrier in my, my part. So you've got...
I think MTSS might be a really good way to build
Right.
that connection between the preschool and, and the kindergarten, because helping teachers understand better.
And this may, this may go to Colleen on that. I'm, I'm not real sure that, Colleen, do you have a large participation of kindergarten teachers that attend the MTSS?
Well, as you're, as you're talking through that, I'm gonna have to look at, at who participates, because basically, we work with the districts, who invite school teams. And then the idea is the building leadership teams work across all grade levels. And as Gail has mentioned, it's the full continuum of support. So that would include kindergarten as well.
Well, I'm not so sure they're not out here, you know, and that...
Oftentimes, they are unsure of how to incorporate the early child. But I think now with our work, this is helping.
But what we're trying to do is to be very intentional about making sure that all educators are included, so that all students can gain those supports. So, thank you for the reminder.
Yeah. Well, that helps. As I remember, Janet and I were just at a national meeting last week, and the newest research, this one lady quoted, was that kids coming into kindergarten have a six-year gap in their literacy skills.
Right.
I mean, and they're only five. I was, so that was kind of, obviously, there are some that are way above their age level, and, but many that have nothing.
Right.
You have to do something. But, you know, preschool's not, well, neither is kindergarten.
But that, that's one gap I'm seeing. And then I am truly, and you and I have had this conversation, and maybe it's to Colleen I need to have this conversation. I am extremely concerned that the preschoolers are not being taught in age-appropriate manner. And that really goes into kindergarten. As we set up these standards, it was almost like something kicked in to educators, thinking that they have to teach kindergarten like first grade or second grade. And those kids learn in a different manner. And they need to be age-appropriate. And I guess I'm worried about the pressure and the, because that's when the kids learn to love school. And if we're not doing it right, we're starting these kids off wrong. And I'm, it's a true concern of mine, that I hope, I know you all are keeping in the back of your mind.
But it's important to bring it, bubble it up.
Right. But as the state of Kansas moves forward into promoting more of this, we're gonna see more extremes. And I think we need to make sure we keep our foundation of age-appropriate teaching and learning.
I think MTSS is gonna help with that. And I also think that the new training we're building around the early learning standards, which is, how do you actually implement them? And they're aligned with your Kansas College and Career Ready Standards. And, and it's how do you do it? I mean, the words may look the same, but how you do it is completely different. And I think that's what you're saying. So, but we will definitely keep that in mind. That's, that's the part that we really want to do right.
Well, I think parents are saying to us that the rigor in our new standards is very difficult. And I don't think they mind rigor
No.
as long as it's age-appropriate and taught in an age-appropriate manner. And I think it's very important that we keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you. You mentioned Head Start a while ago. What services do we provide for, or support?
Right. Well, I think we don't really, I wouldn't say we don't support them. But, you know, of course, they have their requirements. And what, what's happening in the, particularly in Topeka, I think, is that the Head Start programs, well, sometimes the school is the grantee. So that helps a lot more of the collaboration. But Head Start is such, such wraparound services. I mean, they're very family-oriented. They, they provide the whole gambit of, you know, referrals to resources. And so I think it's really kind of each using their own strengths. So that's more what we do.
Okay.
I'm, served on the policy council for Sheldon. And I, when you were talking about Head Start, I thought, well, I didn't know we could...
No, I think Sheldon might be...
Topeka Public Schools is the grantee.
Yeah, yeah, right. And I think that they are a part of this, KPP. You know, they are, because there's not enough money for every Head Start classroom and every pre-K classroom to be involved. But they're being a little intentional. But yes, they've been, actually, I think, from the beginning.
Thank you.
Are there other questions?
Well, thank you very much. That was very comprehensive. And it helps us see how you're getting the message out.
Well, there's always the danger, when you have a passion, that you kind of go a little overboard on the action plan. So I, the hardest part was how to get it to you without having you go, oh, my gosh. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank all of you for your dedication to our young students.
Thank you.
Next, we have Scott Myers.
Scott Myers and Susan Halbert to review appointments to the licensor review committee.
Ma'am, good morning. I am here to get your approval of the appointments to the licensure review committee. As you're aware, the licensure review committee, the purpose is to consider appeals from applicants who don't currently meet the Kansas regulations for licenses. If you'll look on page 205 of your materials, what you'll find there is a listing of the current membership, whom they represent in the area, you know, part of the state. And the two nominees coming forward today are Heidi Bolt, a classroom teacher from Chanute, and then also, as a full-time appointment, a three-year appointment, and Darrell Coleman, superintendent from the Niemhaas Central School District up in Seneca, as a replacement because Randy Rivers, our current superintendent, has resigned because he's retiring and moving to Florida. So that's what I have for you today.
Do I hear a motion? Are there questions? Well, I'll ask for a motion, and then we can have questions. Do I hear a motion to approve these two nominees that have been recommended to us?
So moved.
Moved by Dina Horst, seconded by Jim McNeese. Now is their discussion. Then, all in favor, raise your... Oh, sorry, Ken.
It's okay.
Ken Willard.
It's all right. I'm not going to oppose this at all, but I'm just, I just want to point out that it seems to me that with the licensure changes that we're making, that I think the value or the importance or necessity for the LRC is not as, as it has been in the past. I think we could get rid of it. And so I think that ought to be a part of our legislative agenda. It's in statute. But most of these decisions, as we heard yesterday on the, from Scott, these decisions are gonna be, I think, the LRC, the Licensor Review Committee is, is a, does more to relieve the state board of responsibility for decisions than it should. And so I think that we need to be the accountable, this board needs to be accountable for the decisions about licensure review, rather than an appointed committee. And so that's, that's just something I want to throw out for consideration. Most of the complaints I get, have gotten over the last 12 years, have been complaints about decisions made by the Licensor Review Committee. And, and I have absolutely no power or ability to affect that at all, except for the vote that I have, if it comes to us. Okay?
And you have the final word.
That's true. That's true.
Well, and...
So I'm just saying that I think the committee, I, I think that we could do without that committee, especially with the licensure changes that we're making. And I'd just like for that to be a part of, just think about it. I'm not proposing anything now, but I think that's something we ought to consider down the road.
This is a discussion for, that we'll have at our next meeting, I'm sure. All in favor of the motion to approve these two nominees, raise your right hand. Ken, did you raise?
Yes, I voted.
Okay. So we have 10, 0 vote to approve those. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Colleen has appointments to the Special Education Advisory Council.
Yes, I do. Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you again this morning. As you know, annually, our Special Education Advisory Council, or SEAC, seeks nominations from across the state to fill vacancies that come available due to terms expiring or people needing to leave their area of representation because of job change or a move out of state. But for whatever reason, those members can no longer serve. Just as a reminder, the SEAC is, is set up, and membership is determined per IDEA, the Individuals with Disability Education Act. In your board materials, you will find two documents that you will need for this action item. The first is a list of nominations that is color-coded and looks like this. And then the second item, or the second is a list that contains current SEAC members, as well as recommended nominations for SEAC membership moving forward. Recommendations are made due to the following areas. First of all, area of representation per IDEA requirements that need to serve. The other area, recommendation is due to a parent or a person with a disability that fulfills an IDEA requirement. Board region representation. This is something that in Kansas, we choose to do within SEAC. It's not IDEA required. But we have 10 board regions. And so within our SEAC, we try to have board members or board regions represented by our areas in SEAC. If there are multiple nominations for one area, which you will see that there are today, but the same board region, then the first nomination received by our office was recommended. So we have provided for you the dates that we received those nominations. If we've received multiple nominations for one area, but they're in different board regions, then the nomination was recommended if the person is a parent or a person with a disability. I do have some corrections to the forms that you have in front of you. This first document that is color-coded, Dr. Smith, and it is in, she's listed in the blue area, the second administrator of a program for children with exceptionalities. She is not a parent of a child with a disability. So in that second column, you would put no instead of yes. Another correction in the second page, under area of representation, we mislabeled this blue area, where it says parent of child with exceptionalities. It should say parent of child with disabilities. There is a difference. Disabilities does not cover gifted. In Kansas, gifted is an area of exceptionality. And so we do have a section for parents of a child that is gifted. But it needs to be specified in that last section, that is parents or a person with a disability. And the third correction, on your recommendation sheet, the recommendation for the parent of a child with a disability, Wanda Mast was listed. But I would like for you to consider two others, so that we can have representation in Board Region 6 and Board Region 10. This is not a requirement, but in order to have representation across all board regions. You will note that no nominations were received for the area of representation for the public charter. So this will remain open until we do receive a nomination. Are there any questions?
So you have recommended nominations, several, 1, 2, 3, 4, quite a few.
Yes.
Is your thinking that we would have a motion to approve the recommended nominations as one, instead of each one?
Every year, I come in front of you, I try to make this as straightforward as possible.
Yeah.
And it is always complicated. But it is your choice to recommend the nominations as a group or by individual. So I'm really glad that you asked that. I can go through each of the recommended nominations, if you'd like to. But as you will note, on your color-coded copy, there are some areas of representation in which you only received, or we only received one nomination. And then what we tried to do was to cross-reference with date of receipt, as well as the other areas that I mentioned for you, as far as how we came across to those recommendations. The only change, chairperson, that I would recommend to the recommended nominations list is to remove the nomination from Board District 1 and add both Board Districts 6 and 10. And we can have more people on the SEAC, especially if they are representing parents of a child with a disability or persons of a child with, or persons with a disability.
So are you suggesting adding two names to the list of nominations, then?
Replacing one name and adding additional.
Okay. Would, would you review that again?
Yes.
Because I kind of missed that.
Okay. So if you go down to parent of a child or a person with disability, I would recommend that you remove the nomination from Board District 1 and add the nominations from Board District, add the nomination from Board District 6 and 10. So that would be Marvin Miller from District 10, Board Region 10, and Farrah Trail from Board Region 6.
What was the second name?
Marvin Miller and Farrah Trail.
Colleen, I ask you a question. How about?
Yes.
Charity Becker from District 2?
District 2 could also be a consideration, except we have a current SEAC member representing Board District 2. And that is on your, the front page of your SEAC members. So Board District 2 has a representative already. Board Districts 6 and 10 do not.
She is great.
Madam Chair.
You need to...
Oh, I'm trying. Okay. Sally Cobble.
Okay. On our page of, on 209, it's on the white sheet. I go down, and a lady was from Debbie Howser from Manhattan.
That's your...
I don't have, she, Manhattan is not in District 5.
Or Region 5. Okay.
That's 6. Yeah.
And part of it, 7.
Thank you. Another error.
So if we were going to add this, was it Trail?
Yes.
From 6 to balance out districts, maybe we don't need to add that one.
That is correct. We now have Board Region 6, because we've got three current members or, or nominated members for 5. So you could consider the nominations with the exchange of Board District 1 to Board District 10, Marvin Miller.
And that was what, which category again?
That would be parent of a child with a disability.
So do I hear a motion to approve the nominations as presented with that, the one change of Marvin Miller being substituted for... Who is he substituted for?
One half.
I'm, I'm trying to, board, redo this on my computer, and I'm having some problems here. Okay. Okay. Moved by Sally Cobble. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by John Bacon. Is there discussion? Janet Waugh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to see Madeline nominated for the state official.
Let me call your attention to that item, thank you. The yellow section on the front page, we received two nominations. The first one came on May 2nd. Joan Macy is principal or director coordinator for the Kansas School for the Deaf. And then the second nomination that came was from Madeline, who is the superintendent over both state schools, deaf and blind.
I understand that, but I believe in the past, we have had someone from the deaf on the board. And I, to me, it appears that we should have one from, that would represent most schools, which Madeline would do. That's my thought.
Right, the area of representation is state official, and so the expectation is that they represent both.
Okay.
But it is your decision as a board as to which one you would select.
Exactly, but that's my thought.
Madam Chairman, I would be willing to put that as part of my motion.
So Sally is willing to accept an amendment to the motion to substitute Madeline Berkendine for Joan Macy in the nominations. So do we need to vote on? This always gets me goofed up.
You have to ask the second. You have to ask John, he's seconding.
Oh. John, are you willing to accept that change?
No.
No.
I already had a conversation with Janet. I thought Joan Macy would be a good selection for this committee, so I wanted to stay with her.
So I guess we go back to my original motion?
Okay, then we will vote on the original motion to accept the nominations that we received with the exception of substituting Marvin Miller for Juana Mast. All in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five. We have nine in favor, those opposed, Janet Waugh in opposition. Thank you very much.
I want to thank you for your patience. Every year, this is always a fun opportunity, so have a great day.
We appreciate it.
I appreciate your support.
Thank you. And we have a break scheduled. We will take a fifteen-minute break and reconvene, a little more than fifteen minutes. We'll reconvene at ten till. Ten till eleven. We are now ready to address our new item eight regarding a request for an oral argument by teacher license applicant Jerry Duskowski. And I believe Mark Ferguson was going to share information with us about this.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I apologize that these were added to the agenda late, although, because I didn't get them too Peggy to get them on the agenda, but I did send you a memo in advance so you could have an opportunity to kind of understand what, what these, why these issues, two teacher license applicant issues were coming before you. In the, in the memo that I sent to you, I explained Mr. Duskowski's request. He submitted a written brief. Procedurally, where this is, is that Mr. Duskowski has received the initial order from the PPC, but the board has not yet considered that issue as it comes up on your regular docket. The notification of the initial order indicates that he can submit a brief in support of his, his position, and he's done that. Scott Gordon would like to provide a response, and since there would be both the applicant's brief and a response on behalf of the, of the agency, I did not send you the detailed written position statement of the applicant until we have both of those. So procedurally, what you do is you'll have both Mr. Duskowski's written brief, you'll also have Scott Gordon's written response, and you'll have all of the supporting documentation that you typically have to review the, and consider the applicant. The only issue for you to consider today with regard to the teaching license applicant, Jerry Duskowski, is whether or not you would grant him his request to have, for an oral argument as part of your consideration. There is no specific requirement in the rules or regs related to the Administrative Procedures Act, and so it's simply your discretion whether or not you would grant him the opportunity to address the board. I don't have a position one way or another on that, a specific recommendation. My only recommendation would be that if you, if you do grant the oral argument, that you would just simply give three to five minutes, whatever you think is appropriate for Mr. Duskowski to address the board, and that you give Mr. Gordon the equal time to address the board as part of your overall consideration of the, of the application.
What's the past history on this type of request? Have we ever done this before?
To my knowledge, we only granted oral argument for Terrence Vick, and I don't recall exactly where, which step in the process it was, if it was at the same process, but we did, you did grant an oral argument to Mr. Vick. To, to, yeah.
Didn't Doug write?
And Doug Wright, yes. So it's not, it's, it's, I would say fairly rare, given the, the numbers of applicants that you see on a regular basis.
I see I have two names on my speaking order. Are these in reference to this issue?
No.
Are they old that I didn't?
I think so.
Kathy, was yours an old one?
Mine is old, but I would like to ask.
Okay. Yeah, Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so let me clarify in my mind. This has been to the council.
It has been to the PPC.
Has not come to us.
It has not.
I guess my thinking is that, I don't know that I want to start doing oral arguments until we've heard, and then if they appeal, maybe at that point in time, I'd be more, I mean, because we haven't even heard what the issue is. That, that's, that's my thinking, is that we not do it at this particular point in time, but, you know, then if we turn it down, and if he wants to appeal at that point in time, then maybe we look at that, but that's my thinking. Some other folks have probably, I know, been through this more than I and maybe have some other thoughts.
To that point, I have not even seen the initial order because that hasn't come through the paperwork on the agenda, but, I mean, he would have at least had an opportunity to provide testimony at the PPC. I don't know whether he did or not, but he would have had that opportunity.
He has testified, you say?
I don't know, but I'm looking at Scott. He did testify. He's nodding yes.
And.
So procedurally, though, you'll see the initial order and, and the supporting documentation when it comes before you.
For approval at our next meeting.
At your next meeting.
So the question is, do we want to hear from this person before we even?
Before you make a decision.
Make a decision. And our usual process has been, we make a decision, and then if they object or want a reconsideration, then they have come to speak to us. Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. Well, won't we be provided with the audio hearing as we were with those two previously? So would we have that so we could?
Was that after they appealed? That was after they had appealed our decision. Yeah, and we probably would.
But we won't have the audio as part of the, the, Scott, can you address that issue? Because this is, since it was only the initial order of the PPC, it's going to come in the regular board packet, but it's not, you're not, the board will not have the full supporting documentation, including the audio unless it's, unless it's appealed. Is that correct?
I don't want to get into specifics, but all of the evidence that was admitted during the Professional Practices Commission will be included in my response to Mr. Duskowski's brief. That can include a full audio recording of the entire hearing. I can tell you that it was a day and a half. That's how long that hearing lasted. I'll make it available to you more than happy. We have not requested a transcript to be made of that hearing at this time, but all of the documents, yeah, you're going to get all the evidence in front of you.
But that's because you're providing a written response to his brief.
That's correct.
Okay, but just on a generic matter, not related to him, normally when a, a matter, an initial order comes before this board, they don't have all of the audio and everything. It's just, it's just the initial order and the supporting written documentation.
The only time that we have made all of the exhibits available to you is if there has been a question or you have requested it. The last time that we provided all that information, you were referring to Nancy Burris and Blake Ballinger, I believe, that's because you had pulled that from the general agenda, and we made all of that information available to you before you made a final decision.
I just want to make that clarification so that it, it will, you will have all of that, only because he's providing it in response to Mr. Duskowski's written brief, but normally, unless, as a matter of course, you wouldn't have all of that.
Well, I would think if that's available to us, we wouldn't need to hear from him at that, you know, at our next meeting, but I want to know what other board members feel and/or if there's a motion to one way or another. Nina Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, it seems to me that there's, I agree with what was said previously, that it just seems like there's a process in place, and if we deviate from that, we could be setting a precedence that we will not be able to, to tell others no. And we would become the hearing officers instead of the PPC. So I tend to agree that it's not necessary for us to, to hear this person until we determine that we reject, that we agree with the PPC, what, and they appeal whatever process that they need to follow. So I, I think we need to say, just say no.
Do I hear? Do I hear a motion that we adhere to our current procedure and deny the request? Would that be a proper motion? Moved by Sally Cobble, seconded by Kathy Bush. Is there discussion? Then I will call for the vote. All in favor of the motion? Ten zero, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, as a follow-up, just to, to remind, this, since this was a, a brief has been provided by the applicant, Mr. Gordon will also provide his response, and all of that will be provided to you in the board packet for your full consideration, like any other case that comes before you. You'll have the initial order of the PPC, which will be supplemented by those two briefs, and then you can make your decision at the next board meeting.
Thank you. And then our next item, which is new, item nine, a petition for reconsideration by the professional license applicant Harrison Hamud.
Madam Chair, you, this board, with your signature on March 11th of 2014, issued a final order with regard to Harrison Hamud's teacher's license. In that order, it provides notice to the applicant that within fifteen days after service of the final order, the applicant may file a, may request a reconsideration by the board of the order. The reconsideration is not a prerequisite to seeking judicial review. So if, if the applicant is not satisfied with the board's decision, then the next step in the legal process would be a judicial review of an agency action, which is a specific lawsuit that we've defended others in by filing in the district court of Shawnee County. And so that would be the next required step. So the, there is, we have, the board has provided the applicant with the opportunity to request reconsideration of the order. You are not obligated to accept the request for reconsideration. I have attached to the memo, provided you the, the prior initial order of the PPC, also provided you the final order of this board, and then I've also provided you the request dated May 12th of 2014 from the applicant, which is simply a one-page summary of his request for reconsideration, and, and then my follow-up letter to him advising him that, that that letter is considered his petition for reconsideration, and it's back to you for review. So your options, I believe, would be to, to reject the, or to deny the reconsideration or request additional input and response from Mr. Gordon in response to the petition for reconsideration and take that up at the July meeting as well.
Is there discussion? Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so this was not really on our agenda, so we don't have the information in our packet, correct?
That's correct.
Because I would have to be refreshed on this before I feel like I could make an intelligent decision.
So are you suggesting that we?
Well, if we're going to reconsider, I don't feel like I could do that today. I mean, is that, are they asking us to reconsider today?
It's, the, what I provided to you was the initial order of the PPC from January, the final order of this board from March 11th, and then I did not provide all of the supporting documentation because you have the, not only the initial order, but then the final order of, of this board where you made that decision in March. And then I provided the letter from Mr. Hamud. So if there is something in the letter that suggests that you would like to take it, you would like to revisit the previous board's decision, then yes, I think we should provide everything to you so that you can reconsider it in. everything to you so that you can reconsider it in... At the next board meeting with all of the supporting documentation.
When was that memo sent, Mark?
That was May 30th.
And what was the vote on that particular?
I don't believe I have the vote in the final order. I have to... The board denied the application, but it does not state the vote. We could research... I could look back at the minutes from the March 11th meeting.
I feel like we're all kind of in an awkward position because the memo was sent, yes, but we were not aware that it was going to be an item for consideration at this meeting. So probably most of us read it at the time, but hadn't reviewed it recently, and I think that's Kathy's point. And it's hard to act on the petition without really having looked at the information that's relevant to it.
Do I understand, then, that you... The sense is that you would like to reconsider it, but you'd like to reconsider it in total so that you can make an informed decision. I guess when I was looking at this, I was thinking, well, his letter would either trigger, you know, something that might suggest that you want to reconsider it or not, and that you can make the preliminary decision whether or not you even care to reconsider it. But I understand that the dilemma, that if you don't have it all in front of you, that that maybe is insufficient. So would you like to move forward, then, with making that part of the agenda for next month, and also similar to the other one, provide you all the supporting documentation?
Well, it sounds like we'll have to do something of that nature, but I see Ken Willard has a comment, so Ken, I'll let you put your opinion in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't recall this one specifically, but clearly we voted on it back, was it in March, to deny his renewal? And I don't see anything in the information that Mark sent us that would indicate to me that we ought to reconsider it. So I move that we just deny the request for reconsideration.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Ken Willard, seconded by Sally Cobble, that we do not reconsider our previous decision. Now is their discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Thank you. We had a ten-zero vote on that. Okay, the next item on our agenda will be board reports and future agenda items. We always begin with the chairman's report. I did have a reminder for you that the Emporia State Conference Common Sense about Common Core has been rescheduled to October 30th. So if you were interested in attending that, you might make note of it on your calendar. Our attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I submitted my monthly report regarding activity. Perhaps the largest amount of time was spent related to the assisting in the response, the joint response on the Petrella litigation. The appellant's or the plaintiffs now have the opportunity to file a reply brief to that response before the Tenth Circuit, and once that comes in, I'll give you a copy of that. You'll also see that I have two personnel matters before the... With the Kansas School for the Blind, one of which will require some significant effort because that has been appealed to the Civil Service Board. There's a recommendation by the School for the Blind for that employee be terminated, and that employee has the right then to appeal that recommendation to the Civil Service Board. And so I'm working with the administration at the School for the Blind to cover the requirements necessary to justify the recommendation of the administration there. The... I have been advised by Mr. Gordon that following the special meeting that you had last week, there have been some... The temporary regulations have been moving through the process. There have been some suggested changes to the language of the temporary regulations, and I'm informed that the board will need another special meeting, which would adopt the final temporary regulations at some point. We don't have those back before you yet, but once they come back with comments through the process, the board would need to have a very brief special meeting to adopt those final temporary regs. The only other thing to update you on is that there's a hearing. I've provided you the details, courtesy of Cheryl Whalen, regarding the follow-up hearing that's this afternoon on the Gannon case, the school finance case. Since I'm here in town, I plan to attend that and observe and see where that goes in front of the three judge panel. So that's how I'll be spending my afternoon, is observing that, and can probably give you a little more detailed report on that after the hearings. And I stand for any questions.
Are there questions for Mark? Doesn't look like there are. Okay, thank you. Legislative report? I don't know that there'd be anything at this point in time, but if there is, I don't want to close the door in your face. No? Okay. Board committees? Does our communications committee have any reports? Okay, then we're ready for board member reports. We'll start at this end this time with Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be presenting at KU on Friday, but I'll be presenting as a businessman and not a representative of the state board. I'm guessing that my position on the state board helped me be selected as a presenter. Probably had some influence. But anyway, I'll be at KU on Friday. The Professional Standards Board has a meeting coming up. I don't remember the date, but I know it's coming up soon, and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Willard.
Pass.
John Bacon.
Pass.
Janet Wall.
I won't pass. I attended several graduation ceremonies, celebrations, one to the School for the Blind that Steve was at, and the School for the Deaf, which I thoroughly enjoyed. And then, of course, the one that was really the best, I attended El Centro's preschool graduation, and that was really great. I really, really enjoyed that. But mainly, I did want to tell you about the Confidence and Kansas Public Education Task Force I'm on. I told you yesterday regarding the Challenge Awards, how we are postponing those, but the Governor's Scholars is also becoming a challenge for us financially, and so we are revisiting what we're doing there. We will probably... We will continue. We're planning on continuing the program because it is a great program, but frankly, the food costs us a lot of money. So we're kind of looking at what we're doing. It may become cookies and punch, or it may just become hello, and here's your picture. We don't know. But needless to say, funding is really a challenge for every organization I'm a part of right now, so... And particularly the Confidence Group. But they're working hard to keep all these things going. So, thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am. I conducted two focus groups, one here in Topeka, and then one in Lawrence, and the attendance was pretty... Well, pretty good. I think maybe in Topeka, I just had like 12, and in Lawrence, I had about 10, and had one of ours... Ms. Kayler was there to observe, and I was happy to see her and appreciate... Well, she has children in the district, too, but I still appreciated that she came. They were very good, those three questions. We really were talking... You know, had a lot of discussion, which you can see in the packet that I had. And when we adjourn here, I'm on my way to Casia. We've got a big hearing this afternoon.
Thank you, Carolyn, and I'm glad you brought up focus groups because all of us... Many of us have had those, and I didn't even think to mention that in my report or ask for comments from other board members. So when we finish board reports, then I might ask for each person that did have a focus group kind of give us a brief overview of that. Deana Horst.
Sally's not chocolate.
Did I skip you? I'm sorry. I just faded in the background. I'm sorry.
You're so funny, that's why.
We'll come back to you.
Deana Horst.
Well, I did hold three focus groups. One of them, I didn't have anyone show up in Hiawatha, except I then had 20 show up who were there for another meeting, and I just sort of grabbed them.
You can't count that.
And asked some questions. And so got some interesting comments from individuals who had been... They were there for Second Harvest, which feeds kids in the summer. And they had a lot of retired teachers who had a lot of comments, and also a retired social worker, and a board member, so... And some parents, and there were some children there, too, which was... Gave another perspective to the whole picture. I also held one in Manhattan and had a number of... I had probably 12 there, and a candidate for state representative showed up, and she, however, is a past member of this board. So you, Kathy Martin. So it was good to hear her have her insight because, as she indicated, she'd been through a number of searches in the past. And then I held one in Salina, and that one, we had hoped would be broadcast via video conferencing, but for some reason, the internet decided to go down. So we had to deal with it in a little different manner, but we did it by telephone, and I've received a lot of comments. I wouldn't say I had a huge turnout, but the comments were very well done and worthy of my time, so... Oh, and the rest of it, you've already heard the other report, so... Of what I've done in the past few weeks.
Okay, thank you. Sally Cobble.
Well, it may come to surprise to some of my fellow board members, but I had three focus groups, and I had a great time. They were a lot of fun. How a focus group can be fun, I don't know, but we did have a good time. I had some people that helped me with the focus groups, and I would like to put a shout out to Kelly Gillespie and Dr. Tom Vernon, and to Dr. Terrell Harrison. They all, three superintendents, or Kelly is head of the Southwestern Plains Regional Service Center, but they facilitated for me, and I really appreciated that because that gave me a chance to listen. I had a pretty good cross-section. In each group, I had a member of the public, and which I was really pleased with, a site council member. And then in Great Bend, it was all retired educators of some kind. And I didn't have a current, except Tom, but they were all retired, all very enthusiastic. And I had a Common Core opponent there in Great Bend, but that individual gave us a lot of good insights into some other things, too. So was not disruptive, was polite, and I thought we had a good session there, and my comments on what happened there. But I had a really good time. I had fun.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you. Excuse me. What? Maybe I won't be able to talk.
What else did you have to say?
Oh, my. I was just so stunned at being asked to speak. Recently, in the last week and a half, I've met with principals in various leagues through south-central Kansas as they conclude their years and their activities. And in those conversations, although they weren't focus groups particularly, we did talk about some of the issues relative to the selection of a new commissioner, and basically they... They basically said to me, the board better do a good job. It's really important to them, you know? And I know it is to us, but you know, sometimes we don't realize, or I don't, maybe just me, just how important those things are and how they rely on us to do it. So it's a very important task. But two other issues that emerged in my conversations with the principals were, one, the new change in the licensure rules. There's a... I don't want to say there's misinformation, but there's misunderstanding. There's a lot of questions, and the principals are the frontline folks that are going to be dealing with this. And I guess to Brad, I'd say we really need to get out from very concrete, you know, information on this to them as quickly as we can. And we just assume that everything gets filtered down to the right people, and sometimes that doesn't happen, especially with all the end-of-the-year activities that principals in buildings and superintendents in districts have to do and deal with. We're probably more cognizant and aware of it than they are. So they need real, strong leadership on this. And I would have to say that the vetting of these individuals is going to be in their hands, and that's huge, just huge, and such a big shift in how we operate as principals. The second is, believe it or not, assessments. And they had good comments that were very positive, especially as we heard yesterday on the end, those that didn't participate in the... After, what was it, April 1st or 11th or something? You know, in that level, they were the most frustrated. So to Brad and to all of us, I promised the principals that we would have our act together next year. There's a really high expectation on the part of the buildings for the mechanics of it to work, for it to work. They're used to it being very sophisticated and very efficient. We've developed a culture and a cultural expectation of assessments that work well. We've developed a culture and a cultural expectation of assessments that work well, so, in our state. Right down to the kids, they want to know immediately what they got, and that's going to be tough, because that's changing. There's a lot of changes in this that are, that could be looked at as, why can't I know right away? Well, you might not know right away, I, you know, and how it relates to AMOs and the connection for that, so they're very, they're very nervous about this in the field, and I just wanted to bring that up, because in the three groups that I met with, each one of them, basically, those were the two big issues that were on there, licensure and assessments, and that's where we're going, so, thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The focus group, we actually held a joint focus group for District Eight and District Ten. We held it in the far southeast part of the Wichita district, which butts right up against Andover in the Derby district, so we had a focus group at Kristen McCullough Academy, and we had about 20 people there, and had a good cross-section of people and got some good feedback, so we appreciated folks coming out and joining us that evening. So we had some people who were for Common Core, against Common Core, so we had a certain amount of that also, but we got some good feedback as far as the commissioner was concerned. So like I said, we appreciated their, their input. One of the things that Jim kind of talked about talking to some principals, I've talked to some administrators also, and kind of for the department, one of the things that is one of their big issues is the lines of communication, and it sounds like that's something Brad is working on, so I know they'll appreciate that, and I think what the listservs is, sometimes individuals are on multiple listservs, so sometimes they get the same message multiple times, but sometimes they don't get a message, so it's kind of that inconsistency of communication is some things that I've heard from administration, so I think that's, I know something you're working on, and they appreciate that and feel like that that's a need area as far as getting that information, and, you know, the licensure issue, I think, is also going to be a big issue, plus hearing from some individuals that they're not certain how to proceed, and they've called the licensure office, and then they call me, and so I think really working through some of these issues, and I know it's a tight timeframe, and one of the things I've shared with these individuals is that my understanding is that they have to get a guarantee for a job, and then they work with the district as far as the licensure is concerned on that new license for the eight through 12, and I hope I'm giving correct information there, but that's, that was my understanding and what I shared with this individual. I also referred them to take a look at the regs, and then ask their questions and go to the district that they're, they're working with, but I do think there's a certain number of questions from people looking to seek license under that new piece, so, and I assume the licensure department is handling lots of questions.
Just so everybody knows our process, as soon as you approved them a week ago, which was another advantage of having you do that, as soon as that was done, our staff went, we didn't want to put anything out that you hadn't approved yet, so as soon as you approved it, they're working on how to take those regs and pull them into kind of a bulleted narrative to get a document out so people can kind of walk through, because there are big differences between the ones that this board approved, and then also the ones that the bill, because there are some uniquenesses, so they're working on that document, we want to get that out as quick as we can, so principals can start saying, okay, if someone in my community, you know, yes, in this scenario, you have to have been offered a job, in this scenario, it's the district that is wanting to give you, so they're working on that to get it out as quick as we can, and we've been, same time, I, I talked about five administrators a day, just kind of walking them through, but it's been a week, so they're, they're working on it.
And I, oh, Jim McNeese.
Brad, I had one principal that, that said, different messages from different people in the department, and I said, well, it's all new to everybody, but we really need to have a consistent message, you know, and, and, and career tech ed, it's really, it's even bigger in some ways, because of the funding issues and approval for those, so, and, and some of them have people already that they're looking at, or, and they're, they're, they just need to get on it, and I just want to emphasize again, two things, one is, you know, timeliness of information, but also consistency of message from the department as they, they work.
It is, and, and you're right, so we have a cross team working on that, including Jay Scott from Career Tech Ed. The other thing is, once the board approved it, then we had to design, they're designing an application, because this doesn't go into effect until July 1, so we're already trying to get an application out there for them to be able to, it's just quick, so you're correct, but we are getting applications designed also for them to fill out.
Thank you. I failed to mention my focus group, which was last Wednesday, we, and we held it in Chanute, which is kind of a central location, didn't have a great turnout, but the people that did attend had very good input, and I, I just, my observation is, it's so interesting the differences you hear from different groups. The group that I hosted was very complimentary about communication with the State Department, and that was not solicited by me, but they said that had improved a lot over the past few years, so I wanted to mention that to Brad. There was a special education educator in the group, and a lot of those issues came to the fore that I was not aware of, so I thought it was very helpful, because I think that issue is one that will continue to grow in severity and in breadth as well. So, are there any other comments about focus groups? Janet Wall.
I didn't mention mine. I also had a small turnout, but excellent comments. I felt it went very, very well, and the following day, excuse me, I even received some emails on people who had commitments, there were, I was still in May, you know, so there were graduations and things, other activities going on, so I was very, very pleased. But I was sitting here thinking about this hiring of a commissioner, and I, I'm sure you all know this, but I just was thinking, we need to always remind ourselves, I, I think of this, is when I served on the local board, we hired superintendent, we hired superintendent, I hired a couple of superintendents during my local board service, and I, we used KASB as our group to help us search for the superintendent, and I remember they told us at the time, I believe John Kepke told us, that this was the single most important decision that we as a board would ever make, and because they have so much to do with the direction that district is going in the next few years, I feel that pertains to us, and I think we need to remember this, to keep this in our mind, this is the single most important decision we as board members will ever make, so, you know, I guess that always stuck with me when they said it, and I, and I personally agree, and I believe it was true locally, and I believe it's true in this position, so thank you.
Before I ask for future agenda items. Okay, are there requests for future agenda items? She?
Yeah, that way.
Oh, Deana, sorry.
I know we talked about hearing something more about fine arts, and you may have that planned for another month, and if you do, that's fine. I also serve as treasurer of the Kansas Art Education Association, and there is a great deal of concern about the issuance of credit, of art credit for areas that, by teachers in areas that do not have art licensure, so that, for example, a journalism teacher teaching photography is giving an arts credit, and it doesn't, we don't pick up on it, because they're, they're turned in as, as licensed to teach journalism, but we don't monitor how the credit, who's teaching the credits that are being offered, so that's kind of where these, these, the members of, of the board of Kansas Art Education Association would like us to know, to visit that issue.
We are at the point, if there are no further board comments, to act on board travel, and Peggy, I, you would need to add that, that meeting on the 25th for all members who will be able to be there that day.
Right, and can we kind of go around the room and let me know if you do, because with the fiscal cutoff, I had to turn in everything Friday.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'll, I'll need to encumber that for this week's time.
Why don't you just start? Okay, everyone except Janet and Steve, who will be on a conference call.
I'll have to be up by conference call. I can be up that way.
Sally Cobble.
On that agenda for that, if we have to redo or have a special meeting for rules and regs, is that what I heard earlier today? Maybe, would it be back in time that we could do it at the same time?
That was, that if we do have to have another special meeting at the end of the month, possibly for the rules and regs, we'll see if we can do it at that same day while you guys are already in. I think it'll just depend on when Mark or whoever those come back, if they're back timely enough, and I think that'd be a good idea to try and do that, because it shouldn't take, that shouldn't take very long, so we'll try to do that.
Okay, and Madam Chairman, is this a board meeting that our attorney needs to be present, or is he?
It's actually a work session with our consulting firm. I personally don't see a need, do you?
You can always call me if something comes up.
Yeah, if we have a question, we'll call him. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, thank you. Then I would ask for a motion to approve the travel requests for June.
Is that automatically, we're all put on?
Yeah, that 20th.
Salary and mileage, and I would have to do it.
Okay. Ken Willard.
Madam Chair, I need to add one item for my travel in June on the 24th. Peggy, financial fitness extravaganza in Wichita, I'm speaking for that, so I guess salary and mileage, yeah.
Anybody else have anything for the rest of June, because I'll have to do all that at once? Professional standards board, Steve, you don't know that, is it a June date?
It's not so far, I don't even worry about it.
Okay, then, do I hear a motion to approve, Carolyn Campbell moves to approve, Jim McNeese seconds the motion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, looks like we have a 10-0 vote on that, thank you very much. Well, it looks like we are, for the first time I can remember in years, ready to adjourn a few minutes early. Hooray, hooray, hooray. I want to thank, want to thank Brad for the leadership he's providing us, and for helping us get through our meetings and, and everything, so thank you, Brad. Everybody, have a good rest of the day. We're adjourned.